Board of Education, comments from the community members are reserved to the visitors comments portion of the meeting. For more information about how to sign up to speak at future meetings and how to contact board members outside of meetings, please pick up one of the Q and A sheets available by the boardroom entrance, or please visit the district's website at USD266.com. We request that all present, please turn off the sound on your electronic devices and the guests, please refrain from talking in the boardroom during the meeting. Let me also deviate to just say that this is the first meeting with our new board members, and so let me be the first to welcome all three of our new board members, and Andrew for coming back. We have everybody here, welcome to you all, look forward to the meeting today. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Yes, so may.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda, approval of the regular December meeting minutes, approve the contracts and resignations for January 2022, approve monthly expenditures for January 2022, accept report of funds, January 2022, resolution to set the date to establish meeting dates, locations, and times, the resolution to set the date for election of officers, review the school calendar for 2223, and approved job description. Are there any items that need removed from the consent agenda or discussion as new business? Or motion to accept?
We approve the consent agenda.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Superintendent's comments?
Okay, I don't have any in the agenda, but a couple of quick things. We don't have a bond update.
Comments?
Okay, I don't have any in the agenda, but a couple of quick things. We don't have a bond update this month, there hasn't been a whole lot of progress, except a couple of, well, one really good thing, we did get our auditorium seats off of the boat and here and are being installed, and we're on track to have our first concert there in February. So more information will come out, and that'll be an event, you'll want to try to participate in.
It's the first concert.
After doing, who's the first one in there? Question.
Eric's side.
Quick, the May South High expansion is on schedule as well, so still working on some playground designs for the five elementary schools, but. Central, he beat you to it. Way central, be the first concert.
Who is that?
Number seven.
Right? Seven, right? February eighth. Excellent, well.
Lock it off your galley.
Begin the new building, and if you like a bad way to.
Laps afterwards.
What's that?
If you lapse out.
We can all swim before or after, that's exactly right. Okay.
We're excited today to have one of our teachers recognized as a Horizon winner, we'll recognize her hopefully at the next school board meeting officially, but a fourth grade teacher at May South Elementary, Jordan Camfield, was contacted by the commissioner, only thirty-two recognized every year, so we'll bring that up again next month. And one quick but very important recognition, this is the last regular meeting for twenty-five years as a school board clerk in Mays, and so we'd like to take just a few minutes, it's hard to sneak this onto an agenda, so.
And the person who runs the whip.
It's a real. If we could get up here and get a picture of Robin, and is retiring to spend more time with her three grandchildren in the district.
I think it makes more sense for you to be. I think we will soon have an announcement about a replacement, but I think we should begin the public announcements of saying those are very big shoes to fill, and we appreciate greatly all of your service to the district and the time and effort and energy from early mornings, and I know there are very early mornings, we've about to hire the person, right? It's not too late to tell them, very early mornings and very late evenings sometimes, you've been here for all of that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Visitors' comments, there are two, is that right? Two comments tonight?
George Higgo once said, "The only thing that we learned from history is that we've learned nothing from history." Some of us were told recently that Higgo was a Marxist who taught critical thinking, a major component for critical race theory, and a basis for why we should not allow certain topics to be taught in our schools, for fear of promoting concepts like racism. As both a historian and a human resource manager, I can assure you that critical thinking skills are some of the most in-demand skills new employees can have for the workforce, and learning from history and social sciences is one of the best ways to develop that skill. This in no way means I wish CRT to be taught in our schools, we need to teach honest history with as much context and open discussion as possible. Develop the critical thinking skills the kids need, not only view history objectively, but also apply those skills to future careers. Here's an example to better illustrate, at the heart of CRT is one group of people claiming oppression from another group. Spoiler alert, this describes most of human history. Currently liberals are arguing that conservatives are trying to control government by limiting voting rights, while conservatives warn that liberals will institute communist ideologies if they get too much power. No matter who is in charge, they can be seen in this oppressor to anyone with a different narrative. Because of the conflict this produces, society establishes laws and rules that allow all of us freedoms, but also tempers us with consequences for denying others the same freedom. We hold these truths to be self-evident, as the quote begins. Side note, I haven't heard very many complaints about CRT since the election. It's almost as if it was used as a scare tactic to garner votes, but I digress. Here's some advice for the BOE and its new members, think objectively and think critically. You are here to represent every member of this district, not just those who voted for you. Before you make or change rules and policies that affect every member, make sure you are not imposing your own personal thoughts, ideologies, and biased points of view and beliefs on others. Now that you are in charge, prove Higgo wrong and learn from history. Learn that it is better to teach kids how to think critically and not hide reality from them. Yes, we need to temper those lessons with age-appropriate levels and provide lots and lots of context, but you cannot simply sweep the unwanted under the rug and hope it is never discovered. Our job as parents, educators, and leaders is to prepare students for what they will face in life. Limiting a student's ability to learn limits their ability to succeed. As Confucius said over twenty-six hundred years ago, "Learning without thought is labor lost; thought without learning is perilous." Thank you.
Thank you. And Stephanie Knutson.
My name is Stephanie Knutson, and I'm a proud mom of three students here in the Mays district. From the time I was in first grade, I've wanted to be a teacher. I fulfilled that dream and have taught for nearly two decades. Currently, I'm a secondary teacher here in Mays. Parents are a child's first teacher. For younger children in particular, parents are a role model for learning. The responsibility of teaching does not end when a child starts school. When we exclude parents from our schools, we send the wrong message, both to the parent and to the child. A message that parents are not needed, nor is their involvement wanted in our schools. I bet most of you can recall times during your elementary years when your mom or dad or grandparents or siblings came to the school for a play, or a class party, or to drop off your birthday treats and witness your classmates celebrating you. Those moments help shape us. We're excluding an entire generation of students from experiencing these moments. My daughter, who has always wanted to be a teacher, no longer does. I changed about two months ago and broke this teacher mom's art. The reasons are hers to tell, not mine, but a large part of it has to do with all the new procedures and changes that make learning no longer fun, in her words. Our next generations of teachers are fading fast. So I'm standing before you tonight asking for clarification on some previous decisions and opening the discussion on a couple new areas of concern. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe the board voted last November to allow parents back into the schools, with the exceptions of parties and maybe lunches. I'm here to tell you that it's not happening. I've heard rumors that the stipulations were left up to each individual principal, and I'm not sure I understand the why behind that. Either parents are allowed in, or they're not. If we are to be one Mays, why are things not consistent between buildings? As I stopped by my children's elementary school to pick up something from the office just today, I was ice out. I asked to step inside and was told in a not-so-kind way that it's not an option. I kindly informed them that it was changed in November, and the response was, "We've never heard anything of it." What? Is there not a ladder of communication that trickles down after a decision by the board? I've sat in gyms packed with students and parents for volleyball games, wrestling matches, basketball games, I've watched parents leaving pep assemblies at the high school when I went to pick up my kid, I've had parent friends volunteer to judge debate tournaments where they were treated like kings and queens, and just a few weeks ago, I helped organize our school spelling bee, and which the only stipulation for parents coming was that they had an ID to be standard to the system and wore visitors badge. So why, why can I not attend a Valentine's Day party at my kid's elementary school? Why can I not eat lunch with my student and peek at my kid's artwork on the walls? It's been almost two years. This virus, like the hundreds of other viruses on this planet, it's never going away. If nothing else, we can all agree on that. My three children's childhood, however, is moving at the pace of a cheetah, and I'm ready to fight for those moments with them. And as an educator, I could not disagree more with the decision that was made almost two years ago to remove parents from the buildings. I can attest, though it not be popular, that I've heard numerous teachers and other district employees discuss how much they love not having helicopter parents around, and I took offense to that. I'm a witness to the fact that my students, who tend to be the most successful, are the ones with involved parents. So I'm asking two things for you tonight. First, please make clear what the board voted on just two months ago. Are parents allowed in schools at ballgames, spelling bees, holiday parties, pep assemblies, debate tournaments, or not? It should be an all or nothing, in my opinion, and from the looks of most other schools I've seen, which parents are spread out like confetti, the students suffering the most at this point are the elementary level students. Secondly, I'm asking for you to vote tonight to allow parents to attend all events, not just at the secondary level. This should start tomorrow for all schools and be open to lunches, birthdays celebrations, battle of the books competitions, holiday parties, and anything else a parent might want to be part of. A security ID scan is in place at all schools, not just at mine. Thank you for your time and your service to our district.
Thank you. Apologies for mispronouncing their last name.
No problem. My husband's fault.
All right. Old business, mitigation guidelines.
I've outlined in the board docs, recommendations that are generally copied and pasted from both CDC and KDHE guidelines, abbreviates the isolation period for positive cases if they're asymptomatic, at least for twenty-four hours. Past the five days, the additional five days would require mask wearing. Either KDHE or CDC, at least last that I've checked, requires testing, it's recommended through that, I think, six-to-day, ten-day period, but I don't see that as valuable. I think if we're going to test, it would be valuable to test at the ten-day mark, just to help provide some assurance if the masks are coming off, that they are not infectious at that point. Management of this for students will be a bit of a challenge, I mean, we'll have to maintain a list of who is and who isn't in masks, or not who isn't, of course, but who would be required to wear masks while a school. The biggest reason for this recommendation is staffing concerns. We had ninety-eight licensed staff out today, which is a big number for anything other than a Friday. We needed seventy-seven subs, and we had fifty-nine available. So we have teachers covering classrooms, helping out, other staff covering classrooms. This isn't unusual, this is going on not just locally, but across the country. And so I think, I think abbreviating the isolation period when symptoms aren't existent, teachers, staff, they'll find to work, of course, it would be optional, then we should let them come to work, providing that extra layer of protection. That's it.
You want to test them after they've been home for five days, and then, once they return and they wear a mask for five days?
I don't, I don't want to test them after five, because I'm pretty certain they'll all test positive.
You want to test them at ten?
Test them at ten. It's not, again, it's not what CDC or KDHE says, I think they recommend testing them at that six-day mark when they come back, but I think they're going to test positive. I think we're going to know that many of them are still positive coming back, but less infectious, less likely to transmit, especially if they're wearing a mask. We need them to work. In the cases, many of them want to work, it's easier for, in many cases, it's much easier for teachers to work than it is to prepare work for somebody else to do their job, so. So a test at ten is just an extra precaution.
Do we require a test for any other diseases when kids return to school? They have strep throat or anything like that, they don't have to show proof of a negative test, right? They just come back when they're feeling better?
Yeah, I think it's seventy-two hours fever-free. In this case, we're saying twenty-four after five. Also, I mean, again, regular flu, regular cold, those kinds of things are very different than COVID or any other pandemic-level disease.
So what happens if you test positive?
Keep the mask on. Test again.
But you can stay at work?
Yeah.
And when would they test again, maybe day fifteen?
I'd test them every day, I think, as soon as they test negative, I think they can take that mask off. I think that's, to me, that's the hump to get over.
The problem with that, though, I think the CDC says that you can have a positive test for upwards of ninety days, and then, I mean.
And they've recently scrapped the PCR test altogether, saying that it's not valid.
I think they said on the website, on the Friday, your most contagious, two days before, and two to three days after.
I'm perfectly fine setting a threshold, fourteen days, or whatever that number is, and saying at that point, then, it's very unlikely that they're able to transmit. Again, we're trying to balance competing interests, we want to keep people safe, keep people healthy, keep people at work, keep kids in school, so I'm trying to find a happy medium.
This seems, if they're positive, that would raise even more alarms, like, oh my goodness, our teachers, you know, I mean, they wouldn't have to tell somebody, but they're teaching and they're positive for COVID, like, it's almost better if we just go off of symptoms, and, you know, like we have done in the past, I would think, but.
I will say, it looks a little backwards to me, it's like we're heading to more when we've been trying so hard to get to less, but I understand why.
Yeah.
I understand why. I would say if they're symptom-free, and teachers aren't going to want their baby sick in the class, if they have symptoms, they're not going to come anyway, so I don't, I'm comfortable doing it and just basing it on symptoms or being symptomatic. But then what rule goes for the staff is going to go for the students as well?
That's my recommendation. That's what. Can counterpropose, but it'll be, I think, generally easier to manage this with our adults and with our students, because every household has a different opinion about when to come back, what is symptomatic, and right now, we've got a ton of kids sick with, and adults for that matter, with regular flu, regular colds, pneumonia.
And what if they test before day ten negative? Can they, I mean, are they free to take the mask off then, or are you wanting them to just continue the mask until?
That would be fine. The issue is, I think, with, where I diverge from CDC, not that I'm smarter than any of them, but is that they're likely still, in almost every case, going to test positive on day six, so I don't think we can hide the fact that we're going to have staff coming back positive. I can, I don't know what's going on for sure around our area, Valley Center's already transitioned to this based on the recommendation, I think some of our other peer districts are going to wait, we anticipate additional guidance from CDC, that's what KDHE has informed us, but I don't, I don't know if they're going to back off, I can't imagine they're going to go any looser, and again, there's guidance we follow and there's guidance we don't, so. This helps us prevent potential shutdowns or other kind of staffing crisis, because every day, we're on the ledge with bus drivers, and so we get over this hump, whether it's Christmas break, or just Omicron saturation, or whatever it is, but we've got a few weeks, I'm sure, left of high infection.
Out of the.
Besides other, besides other illnesses.
Out of the ninety-eight staff members we had out, I mean, if this was imposed, how many would be eligible to come back?
I couldn't ask, I mean, we'd have to ask them individually if they've been unsymptomatic for twenty-four hours, that's been five days, but we had such an influx the last, and really, we've only been around for about five days with school-wise, so.
What's our five-day average been on staff out?
I can't answer that question. Like I said, we're only, we haven't even been back five school days yet. But we had a lot of folks come and test, kids and staff test right away, because they had been feeling sick over break, or they were exposed to it with family, or whatever the case may be, so. Most of what we're getting, which isn't unusual, most of what we're getting is exposure from a parent, grandparent, family member, sibling, some of the transmission's still going on at school, but relatively consistent the whole year.
Seems like there are two questions for us, right? First is, should we dial back the amount of mandatory time that somebody should be out, and then the other is how they transition back in? I mean, it seems like we want to get people in if we think they're not going to spread the disease, so they can learn and teach, so that seems like, that seems like a no-brainer.
I just worry about the kids, how to figure out how to get them, are kids that are testing positive, even though they feel fine after ten days, after being at home for five days, and then wearing a mask for five days, testing positive and having to continue wearing a mask, even though they've essentially been out of school or wearing a mask for the ten days?
Yeah, I think the key part here that says if five days, that person is fever-free, I think we just go on the fever-free, because we do that for everything.
Yeah.
And if you're fever-free for twenty-four hours, it's just been a good rule since I was little, and Bruce was little, I don't know.
He's seventy.
That if you can.
We moved from twenty-four to seventy-two a couple of years ago, generally fever-free.
That's true, that's true. I'm okay with twenty-four, because you are not having a worse turn of COVID if you remain fever-free. I mean, you know, I mean, could we get it?
After ten days isn't a hell I'm ready to die on, and it's one extra layer of, any test helps.
I'm okay if they come back and they're fever-free, and then I don't think if they were fever-free and came back, they should have to test on day ten, for me. Because it's going to create another nightmare or another bottleneck, I think, if they test positive on day ten, they've felt fine, it's kind of like the antibodies, they can be really low or really high in your blood, so I, I don't. Then they're testing day ten, eleven, twelve, then the parents are trying to get them to a test, I think that adds more stress, then it weakens our immune system, because we're stressed, and I don't think we need it.
I'd be okay also if we said that from day six through ten, if they tested negative, then they don't have to wear a mask anymore.
I would too.
You said that already, right? Soon as they have a negative test, everybody's fine.
It's just likelihood of them having that.
The problem is that it's highly unlikely on day six, just by nature of.
Unless it was a positive to start with, or something like that.
I was just checking with our COVID nurse, tonight we tested a hundred and ninety-seven and had fifty-seven positive, so through our testing clinic today. Learned four positive cases just through the testing clinic.
Today.
Those all students?
I can't answer that question. We do test some staff.
Right.
We test some staff, household contacts, parents, or spouses, and so forth, so.
Either way, it changes how they're arriving at school, maybe the next day, don't. I think putting the mask in there from day five to ten is a compromise.
No testing at the end?
And no testing at the end. But if they want to go take a test.
They want to.
And they don't have to tell us, they could take it somewhere else, so.
We don't count home tests, by the way. And we have, again, the clinic testing, and we have PCR machines in our district, we have three of those. We don't test one student every day on those, we'll test them if they're in exposure or what have you, but test our staff with those if we need to.
You can always add that test back on later if you need to, right? I mean.
Wait, you said test if exposure, what?
High-risk close contact.
But you, so you test them while they're at school, at a high-risk close contact?
Yeah, we have.
But you ask permission first?
Of course.
Okay.
Can I, I know this is going to sound silly, but if we do seventy-two hours for everything else, why can't we do seventy-two hours for COVID? It's only one more day. Like, if someone has something, like a fever, it could be seventy-two hour fever-free, right, before they can come back? We're already doing that for all the other infectious diseases, you know, why the five days instead of just going with the four and going with our standard protocol?
And then drop all the verbiage below.
Yeah, just back to normal.
I think the infectious peak in that first five days is so high.
Just throwing it out there.
I wouldn't recommend that, I hope we don't.
I mean, I.
Five days is.
We are already, this recommendation would be more generous than what any suggestion for a school is, right? I mean, this, it's people back in.
Yeah.
Close to the CDC exchange for five days, but they exempted.
Generally, it is.
They include schools, don't they?
Mm-hmm. That's awesome.
One time.
They included schools in their guidance.
Just late, just late last week.
Oh, yeah.
But it's guidance, and they're not required, and we follow it, we can make our own decisions, what we want to do.
So then, what you're saying is after day five, the time clock starts for the seventy-two hours fever-free?
No, I'm saying that when you test positive for COVID, you have symptoms, you go get tested for COVID, once your fever ends, say, you take some medications that are recommended, you know, and I've heard of people feeling better the next day, you know, if you're feeling better the next day, then.
That period, whatever is decided, if it's twenty-four hours or whatever it is, has, the expectation is that it's without medicine, without any kind of Tylenol, Advil, Ibuprofen, Cold Med, whatever the case may be, anything especially that's fever-reducing, that's the expectation, but.
And that's with everything else, anyway, right?
Some of the medications that I've had family members take have worked that fast, and you take them, a couple of them, and then you're good, so that's why I'm, you know. Or just because you have a positive test doesn't mean that you're necessarily showing symptoms.
That too, yeah. Okay, well, I stayed.
You don't think we should let them into the school asymptomatic, but positive?
No, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, I mean, just.
We probably do, though.
I mean, yeah, I mean, who knows, people get tested without going through our testing sites, and they're not, I've seen kids riding jet skis this summer that are on COVID, and they feel fine, but they tested positive, so they had to stay home, so I'm.
But they're still infectious, I don't think anybody's arguing that you can withstand COVID, you can have it and not feel sick, there's plenty of evidence of that, but it doesn't necessarily mean you're not potentially going to infect others, that could be impacted by it.
But the test doesn't indicate whether you're contagious or not, it's just saying whether you have it or not, you know what I mean? So you're saying that even though you could test positive on day ten, you know, it's So you're saying that even though you could test positive on day ten, you know, it, it's still a possibility. So I'm just saying, why are we? Why are we doing all extra, you know? And if the case is the same, whether you could test positive day one or day ten or, you know, whatever the case may be.
I don't know. So I, so I'm just throwing it out there, that's all. So I'm willing to go if, if after five days, a person is fever-free for twenty-four hours, fine. But I'm willing to say if they wanna take their own test at day six, even though it's unlikely it will come back clear, that's on them, not on us. And then remove the ten-day required test. We're on that.
If they don't test.
And if they don't test.
Until the tenth.
Until the tenth day.
So five days plus twenty-four if needed. Mask for five days or until a negative test.
Or until a negative test, cause then we're given the option to take that off. And I see that as kind of a middle ground.
I knew it would be that.
We, if they choose to test day six, day seven, day eight, day nine, test them?
If they choose to, yeah. And really, the people that want the mask off are gonna go to Walgreens or somewhere, get that test and then bring it to us. They're probably not gonna go through our line if they wanna take the mask off and if it's iffy. Oh, maybe they will. I don't know.
But we're not.
Same test.
But we're not required.
Not required, but if they, right. But if they want to take a mask off by day ten, they'd need to produce a negative test.
So just to be clear, on day ten, they can not wear masks or after day ten?
After the completion.
I just wanna make it perfectly clear so we don't get questions later.
And it's, and, and it's, and to that point, it's not, it, the first five assumes you've been set fever-free for twenty-four hours. So if you're not fever-free on day five, you've gotta keep it until you're twenty, right? So it'll be more than ten days because it's five after you're sympt, you're fever-free for twenty-four hours. So it could be more than ten.
Unless we were to change that verbiage.
Right, yeah. I just wanted to be clear that every person is not automatically out of a mask after ten days. If they were seven days before, they could start the mask game five days. Any other suggestions?
Yeah, we're just talking calendar days, correct? I mean.
Correct.
So like it's a third, okay.
So the weekends included. And we don't require that they test on day ten. If they feel great, take the mask off on day eleven. But otherwise, if they want the mask off before that, test after they're fever-free twenty-four hours after five full days? Or did we wanna change that? Fever-free twenty-four hours, even if it's after day three or four?
I think we should keep five. I don't know what other people think. Five is.
I'm okay with five. I just wanna.
Any other comments? Ready to vote? Let's make sure, make sure we're clear.
Yeah.
Kinda clean it up and then get your, get your green light tomorrow.
I think what we've said is five full days. Symptom day is day zero. You have to have both five days and twenty-four hours without a fever. So that might be more days. And then five-day calendar days where you'd be required to be in a mask. Day, day after those five, you can come back without a mask. Or you could come back without a mask sooner if you produced a negative test. I think that's the motion. Anybody wanna make a change to that?
I mean, would we get a vote for less, lesser days and go with that fever thing? Would any of us could do that?
I suppose this motion will fail with it.
That's true. That's right. Let's vote. I was going.
Is there a second for the motion, I guess, just kinda as explained?
You're, okay, so you're, you're motioning for the amendment?
Uh, I just think really all that it changed is don't have to test to come back. You'd only have to test to come back masked without a mask in less than the sixth.
Yeah.
I think that's some real change.
And then, I knew I was gonna do this and hit everybody up for a long time. But if you're fever-free, what is the difference between the flu and fever-free and COVID and fever-free with a mask?
I don't.
Cause if we, I mean, cause we're not masking the flu A kids or flu B kids, right? So I'm just, I'm just, if you're fever-free.
Are you making?
To be contagious.
Amendment to?
No, nobody would show up tomorrow.
Trying to figure out, trying to figure out what your motion is.
No, my motion is if you're fever-free.
I think this is.
Jessica went before, anyway.
I think this is for staff and students who have tested positive. For COVID. That the COVID return protocol is you could come back starting at least day six, assuming you had twenty-four hours fever-free in a mask for five days, unless you got a test.
I'm just, yeah, I'm still hung up on the part that you could be fever-free on day three.
Well, for some, some people, they might be fever-free on day zero because they're asymptomatic and feeling fine and on jet skis. Man, I think that's the thing.
But they wouldn't have tested, so we wouldn't.
About protecting us individual staff or student member's health. It's about them coming to the building.
Can I also?
The theory is you're contagious. The nature of the virus, you're contagious for the five days.
Okay.
So I think that's where the five days comes from.
Okay.
And asymptomatic may be less contagious, but mask is, is helpful.
And we could have hundreds.
Also, let's, I also wanna make, make it clear, I'm not recommending, this doesn't change anything for how we're operating with household, household contacts. We're still in household contacts, we're still, they can isolate, they're still in the old test to learn. Say old, it was, but that's, that's the trickiest spot.
Yeah, this is just a change to the people who have.
Tested positive and don't have symptoms after five days and are fever-free.
Can I say I agree, but I just don't wanna second.
Sure.
Yeah, but if they come on day six with the negative test, we're gonna take the mask off.
Any, any day between day one and five of the masking five, they could come without a mask if they had a negative test. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just gonna throw this out there too, because I've had this happen. A friend of mine's son tested positive and then a few hours later tested negative. What, what do we do in that? I mean, it can happen. You think one day it tests positive, the next day it tests negative. So would that still, would you still have to follow the same? Would they still follow the same protocol? Because they tested positive, but then they tested negative or could they return to school?
Right now, one positive test is positive.
For the five days.
Regardless of subsequent tests.
That's up.
But to your point, that's what the NFL does, is one positive, but yet if they go back for, I think, seventy-two, forty-eight or seventy-two, they can continue negative after that and they're good.
I mean, I, I'm fine if we wanna consider a separate change to people who are false positives. I think this is a policy that's directed to people who are positive and how we can get them back. We can have a separate policy for what we would think of as false positives. But I don't think that would change what we wanna do with people who we know are positive.
Well, it's not necessarily, like you said, and the nature of the virus, it's the five days and being spread. Well, so even if I felt great on day two or three, I could still be transmitting that at a higher possibility. So to protect everybody else around me, I'm gonna do the five days than the twenty-four. I, I, I can do that. I just.
The old ten or before that.
I'm okay.
Or teen or.
And I don't love it.
Before that, the old twenty-one and before, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I don't love it. I, I can, I can.
I stick to the five days.
I can, I can back it up as long as they have an option to test on that, you know, six, seven. Well, let's check one through the seventh day because it's twenty-four hours and then, okay. That's fine.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. New business. Prove new courses.
That was just to amend, I guess, sorry, point of order. But there's just to amend the motion. I think we still have to vote or we still have to actually.
Uh, we can if you want. I thought when somebody said, what's the motion, that we had done that.
Okay.
This isn't, doesn't come as a motion. We, we amended on the fly.
Gotcha, okay. Um, yeah, I guess.
Revote on the entire, revote on the entire thing.
On the entire thing, I guess, what I wanted to do was go ahead and, um, Miss, uh, I didn't get her name right, but, um, I mean, the, from the public comments.
Newtonson.
Newtonson, thank you. Do we need to confirm that what the verbiage is in there and confirm that the board is okay with that verbiage?
Yeah, I thought, I mean, I, what I said, what I think is the motion, and everybody clarify now what you think you just voted for.
No, yes, you, you motion, we approve to amend the proposal. Now, my request is, is hey, from the general COVID mitigation guidelines, are we all in agreement that, I mean, from what she, uh, the concern that she posed of, hey, allowing parents back in the class? Are we all in agreement with that language and making sure that's universally applied?
We need to talk about the next, I think for sure.
Okay.
Cause she was here and she addressed it and apparently we've been unclear. So I would put that in a discussion here. We're talking about mitigation guidelines. I think we need to address it. Obviously, we were not clear.
Just might point out, this was, tonight was the first time I've heard any concerns or questions or challenges to the visitor policy. I think the direction we got in November was send it back and let the principals design, elementary principals design a, a plan and consistently, I believe, at least without any other indication, that's what they follow. Secondary schools are different than the elementary schools, but it's all a matter of, of permission. If you wanna visit a classroom, I was in elementary school just, just Thursday or Friday and they were, and still watchdogs and so forth, but I haven't, we haven't, I'm not aware of an overwhelming number of, of any number of parents who have been turned away or aren't getting in. Now, again, Valentine's Day parties is something I'm certainly gonna discourage. Uh, those things are.
Can I? I've, I've had several parents reach out to me as well, uh, um, in regards to this issue, especially around the Christmas holiday when they couldn't come in for Christmas parties. Um, so it's, it's not just a one-off type of.
So what have our elementary school principals come up with? Anybody have? What, what are we doing now?
Question too, like, you know, when parents are coming to like check a kid out or drop something off. I don't know that they're even letting people in the office. It's still.
Not at Pre-Woodman.
They talk through this feature and you can't even come into the office. Um, I think that's kinda what she was indicating happened to her.
It's not just at the elementary schools either. Um, it's happening at the high schools also.
That's right. There's the check-in table.
Yeah, there's the check-in table. Usually you can get to the office, but you can't get past the office.
Well, I'm saying sometimes they don't even let you in the office. They just keep you out in the little corridor and talk to you through the.
Well, I think the policy we passed, I mean, the policy is that the building principals could decide access to the building.
What have they decided?
And, and some of them by grade level might be coordinating for consistency sake by building type.
A six, no guests in the lunchroom.
A six.
Volunteers at class parties or celebrations, observations approved through the principal. Uh, define what visitors and as far as communication go, ask to come, serve as, serve a duty as requested by classroom teacher. So help support small group reading or elimination or whatever the case may be, what teachers need help with. No siblings, old little brothers, old sisters and such.
So pretty much.
Teacher requests a volunteer.
Who are we? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, pretty much nobody. Okay, I, I can go if that's how everybody's comfortable and the principals, I respect them. But the last part is what catches me is that we said, um, what was the last thing? Teacher request. As, I would not, if I was still teaching, go and say, hey, I would like parental help. That's my own weakness and my own stubbornness that I don't wanna.
People earlier, or earlier in the school year, late in the fall, that teachers did want the.
Oh, you do. You do, but you don't wanna be the one asking.
No, I think they do ask. I think that's how they.
Well, we used to, as parents, just be like, hey, do you need something? And they'd be like, yeah, then I'd coordinate with the office. So it left the teacher out of saying, I'm kinda failing here. I really need all these things cut and pasted now.
I've not been a teacher or principal at an elementary school. But I, I suspect the order of operations is either a teacher or a parent. Either teacher says, hey, I need some help or, you know, pre-COVID signing up for volunteers and here's the activities and so forth. Now would be, I could use one volunteer a day or twice a week or whatever. Or a parent would say, can I come in? I have this timeframe.
Okay, so the parent is.
Would say, sure, I could use you. I haven't, again, that may be going on and maybe teachers are saying, no, thanks. But I haven't heard any of that.
Okay.
Doesn't mean it's not going on, but, but that you're getting the phone calls or emails and we're not is, is, is what makes this difficult. We don't. We, we can help facilitate some of this. We can help break down some, some communication issues, but we haven't heard a, that I'm aware of a peep about visitors, parents visiting classroom parties.
I think we've worked hard to make sure upper administration don't hear a peep. So I do. So I think that I, I think, you know, on different things. And it's true though, you gotta speak up if you wanna, you heard, I don't have a problem with, I, I'm, I'm surprised we don't have visitors in. Like, are we saying we're not seeing them in the schools at all now? Because that's the, I, just three out of thousands, okay? But, um, they're not allowed in. So we wanna clarify or we wanna push what the principals have said, I guess, to say you must allow in a certain amount. Is that what we're saying?
Toby.
We left it to their discretion and now we see some of the public is not happy with the discretion. So they're asking us to do something about it. What do we do?
Yeah.
I don't understand who we're protecting by not letting parents come into the schools. I mean, the kids are around the parents at nighttime anyway, so what difference does it make? And like a Valentine's party, how is that more dangerous than being in a classroom?
Historically, hundreds of parents at the same time at a school.
Well, we could limit, we could limit that.
I mean, we don't need to allow aunts, uncles, grandparents, but maybe each kid could bring two guests or two guests from their household that they're, you know, normally around.
Or even one household guest. I mean, I'm willing to go that far. One household guest masked.
I mean, just cause it. Can't have guests at lunch, uh, no class parties. Observations must be approved. I mean, what else does that leave? What else are parents gonna wanna come for?
What is an observation definition?
I mean, helping the classroom obviously is a big one that a lot of parents like to do, but I know bringing your kid lunch and eating lunch with them in the classroom, that was always a something special to do.
Yeah.
Um, most of those things that we can do now, I think if they just, just ask, just reach out and say, I wanna.
It, it's not happening now. I came, I brought, my oldest daughter, it came home from holiday block leave from the military. We haven't seen her in six months. We tried to surprise my daughter at one of the high schools and was denied entry. They did everything they could. They pulled us aside, but she wanted to go out and be around her friends and have the excitement of her sister being home, a military reunion, and that was denied. And.
Wondering at lunch or wandering around the hallway.
Walking out to the commons to get her, to bring her to a conference room so that all of us could eat lunch together. I even offered to have just my army daughter go out there, you know, just to grab her and bring her back and they said no. So it's not happening and it's not even just at elementary schools. It's happening all over.
But we have basketball games and volleyball games and.
Yeah, if we would've shown up during a football game or a basketball game, it would've been fine, but because it was during school time when she got off the plane, we couldn't. And this, now that's just my own personal example. And that's just my own personal example.
Yeah, I understand. There, there's a difference though between what's voluntary, what's, what people choose to send their kids to, and then school where they have to send their kids to. They have some expectation of, of order management, safety and so forth. So there is.
It's all in basketball games, it's open to the public. There is, if it's a parent or a family member, you're already having those, you know, they're already around.
I think the difference is that if I send my kid to a fifth grade classroom, I mean, they have to go to fifth grade, but they don't have to be around 20 other families, 20 other kids' family members. Right? Because we might choose not to go to a football game because we don't want to be around those families, not knowing whether they might be asymptomatic and positive and spreading a virus. And I don't have a choice about whether I send my kid to the fifth grade, but I do have a choice about whether we go to the football game.
So do we typically have 20 parents volunteering in a kid's Valentine's Day party?
Yes.
Like I don't fit. I love that. Okay, well.
My streets for parking down here.
Maybe just limit.
That's why we have to say one, but then one, it does bring 24 parents and yeah, yeah, we do. But that was weirdly deja vu like, because I've said that similar statement way back when we were talking COVID.
Yeah. I, I, I don't know, I, I, I I can imagine a world in where we want to increasingly have access. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that we would do it in January. I mean, we're less than a week from like every medical officer in the state saying our hospitals are about to be overrun. Seems like a weird time for us to have every kid feel, you know, to have potentially every other family show up. I mean, not saying we shouldn't get there. I just don't know that this month, in this moment, is the time where it makes the most sense to expand contacts between families. And I it just doesn't seem like the, the Valentine's party is the most important thing that we need to preserve.
Yeah, but.
Can we do one? They're not even not preserving the Valentine's party. The parental attendance at a Valentine's party is not the make or break. Doesn't seem like in this moment is the thing we should, as we weigh competing concerns, that it's the most important thing to protect.
As a parent, what I wouldn't give to have my kids in third grade again and be able to go cut out paper hearts and plaster them all over and watch the joy of, you know, receiving Valentines and passing out candy to your friends.
Couldn't, couldn't we at least encourage parents to say, reach out to your child's school?
Make an appointment.
And see about what volunteer opportunities are available or how you can get back in the building on a or can, you know, on a volunteer basis or not, not necessarily like, let's plan a wide party for every parent in the district, but let's, you know, if, if that's something you're interested in and, you know, maybe call the principal and figure out what they're allowing and not allowing or where they have needs.
We may vote principals tomorrow morning, and this will certainly be on the agenda.
Okay, so you could just try to get an idea of what, what's going on, what, what practices are consistent, which are not consistent, what kind of requests are getting, what's being denied. Well,
hard to help. It's hard to do much if we don't know.
Could we have a cap in each building of how many people we have, or could they look at tomorrow, having a cap at how many visitors they have per day? That are masked? Could we at least come to a number?
Well, the policy we passed was that they can.
It's their discretion.
So maybe just to learn, I think what we're asking is we'd like to hear what the. Yeah, what the discretion is, how that's being utilized, right? I think we want to, I think we want to know.
I mean, I want to support our, our teachers and our staff, but I want to support our parents too, and I want to be that voice. So let, you talk to them tomorrow at the meeting and see if we can.
Number one priority is keeping our schools open, keeping our classroom staff, keeping our buses running, keeping our kitchens.
But if you're going to be meeting with them anyway.
Yeah, I, I, we're not, we weren't, we weren't kicking and screaming when visitors were added in November. We just said, how can we, how can we manage this? How can we start phasing this back in? Some teachers aren't going to be comfortable with additional people in. And some, some that are going to want, maybe, maybe multiple, so.
Maybe instead of letting the principals decide, we just come to some sort of blanket agreement, so that there's not resentment between schools because.
That's true. Remove it from them.
They're, they work well together. I don't, I don't think you'll have that. I think they get together and, I mean.
But there is some difference, I guess, maybe to, to your point, the question is, there's difference between grade levels, building types. But not, but both high schools have the same policy. So I guess the question is.
We're talking about Valentine's Day parties, right? Grade school. I mean, if parents at Vermillion can do one thing at the principal's discretion, and then another principal decides some.
The other elementary school, that's the thing we want to.
Same at all the elementary, at least, so that you don't have.
But I think what we heard, and I want to make sure we agree with this, is that the high schools are setting a policy and the elementaries are setting a policy, and those might be different.
And that's.
The question is, is that okay? It strikes me that it is because they got different, they got different.
It's, it's hard for us to make a decision, I guess, and we don't really know what is happening at the schools.
So I guess we.
We had a board meeting in November on a Monday night, and Tuesday morning, after our normal Tuesday morning meeting with principals, they separated into pre-K six, seven, 12, and in that meeting developed their collective guidance, how they were going to operate. And I, again, I haven't heard anything since then.
Now that we have feedback a little bit on that, can we just see how many people maybe have come to visit? A little report on how many have come in. So we can see what the flow looks like.
Or maybe that new guidance wasn't made public, so people didn't really realize. Because I, I kind of thought the, at the meeting in November, it was, it's going to be a school by school. It's going to be up to the principal's discretion. So I wasn't aware that they came together and made guidelines together and so maybe they have these guidelines, but no one really knew that.
How stringent they were.
That there were ways you could get back in the school at this time.
So just clarification, I guess.
Yeah, I felt, communicated out the day after that and said that.
We did.
Adds something, and then, and then I thought we pushed something out later that week in an email.
Okay, we did. And then emails came in saying they were dissatisfied with how open they were after all, so. Which of course will be dissatisfaction after everything that we do, but I'd like to know how many visitors, maybe they got, but even wanted the interest, right? So we know from the principals how many people have kind of bothered them personally to get into the buildings, because I have no idea. Is it a 50 calls? Is it two calls? I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know if, if they, they may not have kept track, so numbers might be difficult, but maybe if they could give us exemplars of the kinds of things that are allowed and the kinds of things that have been denied.
That would help.
And that, even if we don't have accounts for those, maybe we could figure out if that's the kind of discretion that we thought they were going to utilize.
Clarity on kind of discretion. Okay.
That makes sense.
And we can follow up at the end of the week too, with additional communication to families and say.
This is what they came up with.
Parent, parents and visitors are welcome under, you know, vaccinated or masked and communicate with the teacher through the teacher, teacher and principal. We can, we can push that out.
I would almost say, can it come to us first before we push something out?
The what?
The, whatever the teachers and principals come up with, because what if it is very stringent like it sounds? And we want to change that. So we should hear.
We'd have to change the policy that gave them the discretion.
Okay. Find out and then we may have to do that, right? Okay.
Yeah.
I, I take a lot of weight when a teacher stands in front of the public and has something to say. So we say all the time, we're going to listen, and that was a teacher and a parent, so.
It's a difficult, we'll get a report this week about the kinds of things that are being accepted or refused.
Thank you.
Anybody else, any other, I guess, COVID mitigation guideline? Discussion?
So with that, I motion to approve the amended COVID mitigation. You bet. Ah, is there a second?
All right. So now we're voting on the, I mean, we didn't make a change for, hold the logistic library.
So just open.
How we voted on the amended version of the original to start with.
Really, your first motion should be fine. In the, in the mitigation guidelines, there's no specificity about 10 days, five days. That's, that's our, that's been our practice. We've been following guidance on that. That's been in a flow chart that we, we made public and our staff follows and so forth. So you, you've passed that already.
Yeah, we believe we voted for the policy because it didn't come as a motion. We made a motion for what the policy would be.
Okay. I retract my motion.
I'll vote twice on the same thing. It was 7-0. We'll just get a whole bunch of 7-0.
I guess, I'm going to have to figure out how to embed it into this here.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. No other COVID mitigation discussion, then we'll move to new business, which is approve new courses.
I outlined, actually, Ms. Parker feeling, outlined the process to approve new courses. This is consistent before my time. See, and administrators and needs, and in some cases, we approve classes that we won't yet offer. One, to garner, generate interest levels. And two, to get them in the, in the well, that's, that's to generate interest is to get them in the course book, so students know the classes are available. At some point, we, we, or in some cases, we adopt them, knowing we can't fund them yet, we can't hire the teacher yet, or they're going to have to grow into them. Maybe they're a pathway class. In some cases, they are pathway classes. We can, we can hire immediately because we get additional funding for career tech ed and other pathway classes, so. I tried to put as much information in there as possible, so especially new board members could see how new courses are added. So I recommend adoption of those courses as presented.
Questions or comments about the new courses?
Make a motion that we approve the courses as presented?
I'll stick. Rushed a second. Any, everybody's looking at stuff. Any other?
I'm just having a simple.
Comments or questions, people want to, I don't want to. Excellent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Point audit committee representatives. Our audit is now complete and we need two representatives to review the audit and welcome self-nominations from the floor for anybody who would like to serve on the committee. No, that's how I know that you don't want to be asked.
I volunteered last Thursday.
John volunteered. I didn't know that, but that's excellent news. We need somebody to serve with committee with John. You Heather, if nobody speaks up.
I'm looking right at the teacher, so I can't hold up.
Anyone else interested in serving on the?
Explain what the duties would be of this committee?
Uh, to review the audit.
Over and is it just one meeting or?
So the, I've never served on the audit committee, so I'm going to let somebody else who's.
That lost their name, our auditors. Buzzbee Ford and Reimer are our auditors. Every year they, in the fall, they audit the previous year's books. And when they're done with those, they put a report together and now what we've done the last few years is send it to audit committee members a chance to review it. So you have a few days or a week to review it, and then we get together and meet. So it'd be myself, the auditor and the committee members, and we just go through whatever questions you might have, especially if we have new board members serve on that. We'll spend a little extra time. It, it'll be two or three hours, kind of going through the audit, answering, asking questions and so forth. Our audits have been clean. This one's clean. It shouldn't be an issue, but there could be several questions and, and and so we do that, and then once the committee signs off, so it should be one meeting, committee signs off, and then it goes on a consent agenda, rather than having the auditor come and go through the whole thing here at a board meeting for everybody. So really, it's two.
Thank you. John and I would be buddy.
Thank you.
That the rest of you don't ask. Yes.
Exactly.
We needed hazing a couple of years ago and this is all we have left. Yeah.
I say J and J.
All right, John, I'll help you out with that.
Excellent. Two willing volunteers.
No, thank you guys.
I'm ready for some other.
Negotiations. I think I heard a negotiator. There's negotiations.
There's, yeah, all kinds of things. All right. Thank you both for agreeing to do that. Item seven, future meetings. The items for the February meeting will be approval of the calendar, the select auditor of years and review status of bond indebtedness, appoint two members to the policy review committee. I don't know if that's more exciting, but that's coming up. Maze Education Foundation mid-year review and a solar initiative presentation. That's what we will do at the February meeting. Also want to make sure everybody knows that there is a work session scheduled for the 13th, Thursday, the 13th. If we have not, but we've posted that with agenda items. I think the search committee has a list of items for us to work through. I'm going to join by Zoom. I'll be out of town. But that, that, that meeting is this week.
That said 7:00 PM, correct?
All right. Now we'll move to board discussion. We'll, we'll start on our veteran end with Andrew.
I sat down here to be avoided.
Um.
Those don't count much, yeah.
All right. No worries. Jessica.
Well, first of all, I just want to say that I am so excited to be on the board and to be your voice. So if you have questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. I also wanted to say thank you so much to all of our staff, our teachers, our amazing transportation department, our food services, our groundskeepers, our paras, our administrators, and I know I missed some, and if I missed you, you're in the, I love you all. So keep up the good work. Thank you. To Robin, thank you so much for all your years of service. I know our district has been better because of you, and you will truly be missed. So thank you so much. And then I just wanted to say how excited I am about the aviation production pathway being added. I think that's going to be great for, not only for Maze, but for Wichita, and so I'm really excited to see all the amazing things that can come out of that. And that's all.
Welcome to the new board members. And, and I've already said goodbye to Robin, but. All right.
Um, like Jessica said, I'm happy to be here and excited to learn how all this works. Thank you to Complete High School for the goodies today, and I'm looking forward to attending two graduations later in the week at Complete. And that's all. I don't have anything earth-shattering to share.
Yeah, boy. Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking on the audit. Glad to have faces up here, new faces too, and missed some old ones. This is good. Robin, when is your last, you?
January 31st.
31st, so this is it. It, it, so thank you. Yeah. Thank you. It's, it's something to be a parent, be a teacher, then be a parent, and then see all the other things when you're a board member going on behind the scenes. So both of you, everybody, thank you. But thank you, 25 years of this. Yeah, yeah. So enjoy the grandbabies and thank you to Complete High School, and I, I love those graduations, so I need to get back over there more.
It's Wednesday. Thanks. I would just say thank you to everybody in this room, former members also. Thanks for your time and efforts, and I'm looking forward to working with you guys. Optimistic.
I'll, I'll echo everyone's thanks. Also, just want to remind everybody that if you've not had the opportunity yet to participate in one of the survey or feedback opportunities with a search firm, there'll be opportunities to collect additional feedback. I know had people in last week, and I think the thing that's, that they got great feedback, saw the tremendous people that we have, the families that we have, the facilities that we have, so be sure to share your opinions on that process as well. We got a.
bunch of meetings coming up and a bunch of special meetings. That'll be a topic of a lot of those, so I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to get their feedback for that. And with that, I don't think we have an executive session. I don't know the score, so don't tell me. And I have a cookie, should anybody want one, that I want to kind of give from Complete away. Thank you, but I hope somebody will eat that cookie for me. Is there a motion to adjourn? Again, all in favor, say aye.